Okay, you give me about 10 seconds?
All right. Okay. A call to order the regular city council meeting November 23rd, 2021. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson.
Here.
Salvia.
Here.
Albrecht.
Here.
Gould.
Here.
Harrison.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
Sage.
Here.
Thank you. Will you please all join me with the Pledge of Allegiance?
With the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everybody. First, we're going to have, and first I want to welcome Council Member Gould to our council. Congratulations on being elected and welcome.
Thank you.
And now we're going to go into the swearing-in ceremony with Judge Nancy Carneyak. Judge, why don't you come on up?
Sure.
And, um...
I can call people up?
Yes, why don't you do that?
Sounds good. Okay. Well, thank you so much, everyone. First of all, thank you for inviting me here today. As a judge, this is much more fun than sending people to jail, for sure. So, I really appreciate it. But I wanted to take a moment out to thank you for your commitment to serve, all of you today. I know sometimes this job appears to be a thankless one. You certainly hear from people when things go wrong and not necessarily the hundreds of times when you do it just right. So, it's probably a little bit the nature of being an elected official. But please know that we truly appreciate your service and all of you, all the council members here today, help make this community the wonderful one it is and the vibrant community it is. So, thank you for that and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
So, I will ask you to come up one at a time and Nancy will come with you first. You've got the Bible, so you can start first?
Sure.
Absol- oh, absolutely. Okay, there you go. If you want to, there you go. I, Nancy Salvia.
I, Nancy Salvia.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The City Rochester Charter.
The City of Rochester Charter.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of council member.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of council member.
For the City of Rochester.
For the City of Rochester.
For a four-year term.
For a four-year term.
Ending November 24th, 2025.
Ending November 24th, 2025.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Stuart? All right, if you want to, there you go. And you raise your right hand if you could.
I hope I can do as well as Nancy.
You all do just great. I, Stuart Bixson.
I can handle that part. I, Stuart Bixson.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The City of Rochester Charter.
The City of Rochester Charter.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of council member.
Will faithfully discharge the duties of council member.
For the City of Rochester.
For the City of Rochester.
For a four-year term.
For a four-year term.
Ending November 24th, 2025.
Ending November 24th, 2025.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, Steve Sage. There you go. Okay. I, Steve Sage.
I, Steve Sage.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
Solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The City of Rochester Charter.
The City of Rochester Charter.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of council member.
Will faithfully discharge the duties of council member.
For the City of Rochester.
For the City of Rochester.
For a four-year term.
For a four-year term.
Ending November 24th, 2025.
Ending November 24th, 2025.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. All right. And Doug, if you want to come up?
I, Douglas Gould.
I, Douglas Gould.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The Constitution of the State of Michigan.
The City of Rochester Charter.
The City of Rochester Charter.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of council member.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of council member.
For the City of Rochester.
For the City of Rochester.
For a two-year term.
For a two-year term.
Ending November 27th, 2023.
Ending November 27th, 2023.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you again. And I apologize for not having my robe. I was out of the country and I haven't even been back to the office yet. Thank you again for your service.
Thank you. Okay, congratulations to everybody who got re-elected or elected. Okay, now we have our traditional selection of the mayor where typically I would get up and move, change places with the city attorney. But how we're sitting, I'm just going to turn it over to the city attorney right now for the selection of the mayor and the mayor pro tem. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you. As members of the public may know, we do this every year. It's the time where city council selects among itself the mayor and mayor pro tem for the next year. So, we start with the mayor and then we move to the mayor pro tem. At this time, nominations are now in order for the office of mayor of the City of Rochester for a term expiring November 2022. Councilmember Salvia?
Thank you. I would like to nominate Stuart Bixson for a one-year term for the City of Rochester mayor.
The name of Stuart Bixson has been placed in nomination for mayor. Are there any further nominations for the office of mayor? Seeing none. At this point, we will take a vote for the position of mayor of Stuart Bixson for a term ending November 2022. Madam Clerk?
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
No.
Sage.
Yes.
A majority of yes votes having been received, Stuart Bixson is elected mayor of the City of Rochester for a term expiring November 2022. At this time, we will do the same process for the position of mayor pro tem. At this time, nominations are now in order for the office of mayor of the City of Rochester expiring November 2022. Councilmember Sage?
Thank you. I'd like to nominate Nancy Salvia for mayor pro tem, serving a one-year term expiring November 22nd, 2022.
The name of Nancy Salvia has been placed in nomination for mayor pro tem. Are there any further nominations for the office of mayor pro tem? Seeing none, we'll have the clerk call the roll on the nomination of Nancy Salvia for mayor pro tem for a term expiring November 2022.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
No.
Sage.
Yes.
A majority of yes votes having been received for Nancy Salvia. Nancy Salvia is elected mayor pro tem of the City of Rochester for the term expiring November 2022.
Very good.
Mayor, I turn the process back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. I just want to say thank you to my colleagues for electing me mayor. It is very humble to be elected to city council. It is even more humbling to be elected by your peers. So, thank you very much for that. Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, did you want to say anything?
Thank you. Yes, I would just echo those comments and I do agree. It's an honor to be re-elected and really appreciate the support of council. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have public comments, scheduled and non-scheduled presentations. First is the presentation of the Good Neighbor Award by the City Beautiful Commission. Rachel, are you here? Why don't you come on up?
Thank you to city council for having us this evening. This is our third-quarter Good Neighbor Award recipient, Annette Sabraki. I'd like to read her nomination form. Annette has great community spirit and a beautiful, positive attitude both in her neighborhood and in her city. She encourages neighbors to get together and creates a great sense of community in her area. Beyond that, she is often supporting local businesses with shout-outs on Facebook. Currently, she cooks and delivers meals for lasagnalove.org to local people in need of a good home-cooked meal for comfort or financial reasons. She works on getting out the news about this organization so that they can help more people. She has been making masks since the beginning of COVID and donating many of them. She sewed 150 masks and donated them to the Rochester Women's Fund for their Fall 2021 Just Us Girls Stroll to help raise money for local charities through annual grants. But I believe in total, she said she had sewn 1,900 masks?
In two.
In plus two, not 1,902. She also spends a lot of time sewing dresses for LDFA, Little Dresses for Africa, and takes great joy in sending her creations to children in Africa. Annette is always ready to lend a hand and help out others. So, we think that she is well-deserving as a recipient for the Good Neighbor Award. Annette, do you have any words?
I'd like to thank the mayor and the city council. And I would also like to thank Janine for nominating me and Rachel for making it happen. And I'm very proud to live in Rochester. And I really appreciate this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we have some thanks here. We have the Rochester City Beautiful Commission presents you with the Good Neighbor Award for making a difference in the Rochester community. So, we have that plaque. And then we also have some awards downtown in the DEA, I think. Cards for you for all your great work and very impressive what you've done. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Do we have any other public comment? Ms. Turner, why don't you come on up here?
I like the new digs.
Welcome, welcome back.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
Well, congratulations for all the newly and old elected officials. I haven't been to a meeting since forever, but I watch. I keep tabs on you guys. But I'd like to get to know you a little better. With a raise of hands, how many people on the council have lived here less than 10 years?
Well, I don't think we need to...
I need to.
I don't, I don't think...
What's private about it? I can look it up online. Are you afraid that we have no people here?
Okay, you're here to make a comment. We're not asking questions.
And, so, I can't ask a question during a public comment?
No, I just, you're supposed to, this is public comment, not a third degree.
Public comment that I would like to make to everyone here and everyone watching to know when their council, how long their council people have lived in Rochester. Don't they have a right to know?
I guess you can answer that question if you'd like to.
Okay. How many people have lived here less than 10 years? I know you, you told me that. How many people have lived here less than 15 years? How many people have lived here less than 20 years? Okay. So, some of you have history here. My family moved here in 1954 in August. I started kindergarten in 1954 at September after Labor Day, up at the Harrison Central and then High School building. I've called Rochester home ever since. And I've seen too much history being destroyed. And I hope that you refer, when you get to the master plan, to page 155 about historic preservation. It's very important to all of us. I live in a 111-year-old house. I'm very proud of that. I maintain it and keep it up. I'm very tired of seeing other historic buildings being destroyed and put up McMansions on postage stamp lots. So, I would like you to keep in mind, when is too much, too much? When do we cross the line and the good becomes the bad? And where's the break-even point? Because when we pass that, there's no turning around. Again, page 54, or 55, excuse me. I know you're going to discuss the master plan, but I'm going to be taking about three minutes of your time because I don't want to stick around. It's getting a little hard to drive at night. If a parcel of land is currently zoned one thing, but the master plan shows a change in that zoning, wouldn't it go, would it have to go through the regular steps to change the zoning? For instance, South Street, I know you want to get rid of the light industry. I lived on South Street when that zoning went in. I know that it destroyed my neighborhood and put in a lot of things. Would you have to go through the regular channels to change that?
Yes, yes.
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 So, just putting it in the master plan is something different?
Correct.
It's not, okay. Thank you for allowing me to ask a question.
That's a aspiration.
Okay. Has anyone on this council ever complained about traffic?
Never. Just kidding, all the time.
Yeah, I, I, you can raise your hands or not, but I see you nodding. Well, the congestion and the traffic jams and the speeding, speeding on my residential 25 mile an hour road happens on a daily basis. And I'm tired of it. We don't seem to enforce it. When Letica went in back in the, I think, late 90s, we had a chance to divert the traffic off of Main Street. And Rochester Hills stopped us with their subdivision and put up a cemetery out to Tinkin'. It still works to a point today. But at the time Letica was built on Cross Parkdale, all of the truck traffic was supposed to turn left and go up Letica to Second Street. That doesn't happen. I have semis driving by there all the time. I have cement trucks. They are not allowed by Michigan's traffic laws to be on a 25 mile an hour road. So, if you could please give some consideration to that, to the master plan, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Any questions for me? 38 years in, in my house.
Any further public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Brian, someone on the phone?
Yep, on the Zoom call, I see there's a Mr. Yazbeck with his hand raised.
Okay. Mr. Yaz...
Are you guys calling on me?
Yes, go ahead. Welcome.
Thank you. Yes, this is Thomas Yazbeck. I just wanted to congratulate the members of council for getting re-elected. I want to congratulate Douglas Gould for his first term on the council. I'm looking forward to seeing the material that's in the master plan. So, I just wanted to thank the council and the mayor for the work that they've put in over the years. And I'm excited to see what develops in this master plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson, did you have a comment?
Yes, to Ms. Turner's comment, I did notice that we have five signs there at the corner of Parkdale and Letica there that show no, no trucks. So, I'm not sure why they continually go down it, but there are five signs there at that intersection. There's some before it and then there's some as you go up it that it says they're prohibited. So...
Mr. City Manager, any comment?
Looks like they taped me down, so... My understanding is the only reason that the trucks would be allowed is if there is construction. So, if they're driving to a specific site in one of those neighborhoods, that's the only route that they're able to get into. Otherwise, there are ticketed vehicles that are, you know, for weight and for their class. So, you know, there, there are reasons that, again, trucks or vehicles could traverse a road to get in, let's say there was a house that was getting a foundation poured, you could have a cement truck that would be able to legally go onto that, that street.
But go through traffic?
It should not be through traffic. It should be going to a specific site.
Destination.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? No? Okay. Next is approval of the minutes. Consideration of the minutes, the regular meeting November 8th, 2021.
Still moved.
Motion by councilmember Peterson?
Support.
Support by councilmember Sage. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Should I vote on that or abstain?
Yes, no.
You, either, you can vote.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
I don't think you're allowed to abstain, are you? Are we? No. Yes, you are?
Pardon?
Are you allowed to abstain?
No.
Mr. City Attorney?
Only if there's like a conflict of interest. But otherwise, yes or no is appropriate, although no one can make you speak.
We're not, not going to make you speak. Next is to approve this, approval of the consent agenda is the 2022 Trunk Line Right-of-Way Resolution.
Motion to approve is presented.
Motion by mayor pro tem?
Support.
Support by councilmember Peterson. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes. Thank you. Next, we have a public hearing, a public hearing on the use of community development block grant funds. Mr. City Manager?
Yeah, actually, Sienna's going to be zooming in and I think there she's popping up.
Sienna, welcome.
I am here.
Welcome.
Hi.
You're still with us.
Hello. I am. One more day.
Good, all right.
However, I am not counting down that plaque.
Go ahead.
So, as you guys know, at the previous council meeting, we presented to you two options for the use of the CDBG funds. You all have chosen to continue to widen the path in the municipal park to make that ADA compliant. So, at this point tomorrow, with the approval of you all, we will go ahead and submit the 2022 CDBG application to widen the path in the municipal park with those funds.
Very good. Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we do this. However, well, I'm sorry it is public, but I wanted to say, can we in the future, because this is a big project that's going on, can this be something that, this is what we do with this money since the rules have changed and we need to use it for ADA and things like that, that we continue collecting this money and using it towards taking care of the park path? Because that's a million dollars. It's going to take us a while.
Sienna?
So, we can do that. However, Oakland County only allows us to save up to, I believe, three years. It could either be two to three years. So, at that point, we can probably only save up to three years and then restart that process. So, unfortunately, it can't be continuous. We have to submit an application every year for this project.
Correct. But we would be able to then, every three years, just as a council, understand and know that we should be using this to complete that project. That's my point. So, we can get that completed.
Yep, that, that's correct. However, every single year, we would still have to go through the same process.
Yep, that's fine.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I'd be happy to note that it would be year one of three and then year two of three and then year three of three, so that, if that's helpful.
That would be good.
Right, but we can't force future councils to do something they don't want to do.
No, I just would like it made of record, though, that we should be completing that project that's over a million dollars right now with that type of money because that's what it's used for.
Okay. Madam Clerk, is there any correspondence on this public hearing?
No, Your Honor.
Okay. So, at, we are going to open the public hearing to see if there's any public comment. Public hearing is open. Public comment. Public hearing is closed. Counsel.
Like to make a motion to approve.
Motion by councilmember Peterson?
Support.
Support by councilmember Harrison. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Very good. Thank you. And Sienna, thank you for your service to the city and good luck in the future.
Thank you. I appreciate being here. Thank you.
Next is legislative deliberation. First is a consideration or recommendation from the Planning Commission to review and approve the City of Rochester's master plan draft to be available for public review and comment for 63 days, beginning November 24th, 2021. So, what we're doing today is just kicking off the 63-day period of where we'll still have people able to give comments and debate and input into this. The Planning Commission with councilmember Sage and myself on there, we went through it in a lot of detail and passed it to present it to city council. So, now the process is it comes to city council in 63 days, it would go back to the Planning Commission for final and then back to here, to the city council for the absolute final approval. So, tonight, we're just talking about, do we want to move it forward and not? And so, that's the conversation tonight. So, counsel.
Mayor.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Question on the process. So, council will have, in that 63-day time period, council will have another discussion on it or after the 63-day period?
We have 63-day, Mr. City Manager, we have 63 days and then we will have a meeting. So, we can talk about it at our next city council meeting or we could have a work session on it, however we choose to do it. Councilmember Peterson?
Oh, yes, thank you. I would like to be able to have another session to, for us to review once we start receiving comments and things back from the public before we move it forward.
So, we, we can do that at the next meeting or however we choose to do it. Councilmember Harrison?
I, I agree with councilmember Peterson. I think we should have a working meeting on this once we've all had time to, you know, hear from the public, consume it ourselves, digest this a little bit. I think we should come back to it. But I appreciate the work that Planning Committee has put into this. I know that some of the language has changed and I'd just like to allude to the fact that Ms. Turner brought up, this is aspirational. It's an aspirational document. So, to keep that in mind as we're all reviewing it.
Would you like a motion to move forward?
Yeah, so it'd be a motion to start the 63-day clock going.
I'll make a motion to start the 63-day clock for the review of the City of Rochester master plan draft and make it available to the public for review and comment, beginning November 24th, 2021.
Support.
Motion by councilmember Peterson, support by councilmember Harrison. Discussion. Councilmember Albrecht?
I guess I'm talking to all my council members. Do we want to do this working session as part of this meeting or do a Saturday kind of off-site like we're going to be doing with the goals and objectives or, I, I just, this is a large document. I, I think that might be in our best interest. I know you, mayor, you and councilmember Sage probably know this backwards and forwards, but, you know, others, you know, I've read the summary, but I haven't gone through all the 130-some pages of this. So, I would be willing to come in on a Saturday and, for a scheduled meeting for us to go through this if, if that makes sense for the, my peers on council.
I agree.
Or maybe if there's, if not in the head, then maybe, Mr. City Manager, you can do some kind of, get some dates out there.
Sure.
For people to, for people to use.
We get past the 63 days and, I mean, I can look at the schedule and then get them out past the 63 days so that we have the public comments.
Good. And then, um...
Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, so, in that, though, would we be able to actually at least review publicly to, so everyone knows what we've discussed regarding that then? Because I don't want any of our residents to, you know, that was brought forth regarding the historical piece. So, I'd really like to delve more into this here to make sure that we are preserving what we're saying we're going to and make sure that that's part of that. So, I would like it all to be public.
Well, if any time the city council meets, it's a public meeting. Councilmember Harrison?
Mr. City Manager, can we also have this sent to us as a separate document?
Sure.
Thank you.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, so, but most of our working sessions are not recorded, so that's what I'm referring to.
There's a preference, if, you know, some working sessions are not, as council member Peterson, to have it live, like streamed and recorded, other ones are. So it would be up to councils.
Counsel? I mean, we typically don't publish televised work sessions, but it's up to council, and there's probably a cost to that.
I'd be happy to look into it.
I could go either way. I think if we do meet like our normal working sessions are, and come out with, here's what we discussed, you know, a very good summary of that, that might achieve the same intent of that, where we say, you know, we read all the public comments we received in 63 days, we went over each section in detail, here were some of the things we discussed. Would that suffice? Councilmember Peterson.
I want it just to be transparent.
I agree.
Yeah, I don't believe that some of these conversations are transparent enough in the public.
It would be open in the public, right?
Of course.
Well, that would be, yes. I mean, but not all the working sessions are.
All the working, if we have all seven of us, it's a public meeting that's open to everybody.
Correct, but it's not recorded. It's not recorded. So that's what I'm referring to. Normally, when we have them, people can come in, but they're not recorded. So I just want transparency, especially with the people who have been having a major concern about what has been happening in our community. I think that we need to be transparent in that. So whatever all of you decide, that's fine, but I just think it's, we're not doing our job if we're not making it public.
With COVID numbers on the rise, people might not feel comfortable coming to these meetings.
Right.
Okay. Mr. Mayor? Behind you.
It's the attorney.
Mr. City Attorney, sir.
I was with the bat.
I thought I was Sienna for a second. I was looking right at her, and she wasn't talking.
I did prepare a, myself and the planner kind of put together a resolution. I didn't see it in the packet, but it does meet the requirements of the Planning Enabling Act. If I could take maybe a minute to, just to kind of go through what it says, it sounds exactly what you said, but it kind of gives the detail, if I may. Whereas the Michigan Planning Enabling Act authorizes municipal planning commissions to prepare a community master plan pertinent to the future development of the municipality, and whereas the City of Rochester Planning Commission has prepared a draft master plan for the municipality to update and replace its previous community master plan, and whereas the MPEA requires the Rochester City Council to authorize the distribution of the draft community master plan to the general public and the various entities listed in MPEA for review and comment purposes, which is what you're acting on tonight. Whereas the City of Rochester Planning Commission has passed a motion requesting authorization from City Council, whereas, once the distribution period has expired, the City of Rochester Planning Commission will convene a public hearing as required by the MPEA, whereas the Rochester City Council hereby authorizes distribution of the draft community master plan made and passed this 23rd day of November, 2021.
That's on page 32 of our packet. That was in there.
Oh.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
Gotta help us, the fellow Spartan.
There you go. Is there a motion on the table to call?
Yes.
Councilmember Albrecht.
I'll make a motion to adopt.
There is a motion.
We just need to vote.
Oh.
Yeah, that was what I was asking. I wasn't sure either. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you, and we invite all public comment on this, and I think you can, it's online on the city website.
It is.
So anybody can take a look at it and provide comment. Okay, next is reports, regular business, old business, table items. First is the parking rate discussion. Mr. City Manager, we bringing up the discussion from the last meeting.
Yep, so the police chief actually drafted a memo, and I believe he's online as well. So there are several items. The Parking Advisory Committee has made recommendations, and Chief, I don't know if you can jump in, if you say a word, I think he'll switch from Sienna over to you.
Chief, welcome.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you. So initially, my focus on this is two parts. One is the purchase of new meters to update our meter system, and second is looking at the keeping Lot 1 free parking as it has been for a period of time, well over a year now. And so we'll explain each of those situations. As council knows, and we went through this with the Parking Advisory Committee, who unanimously approved this proposal, we have 2G parking meters, which are being phased out by technology, and requires us to look at a new upgrade for our meter system to a 4G cellular technology. That's how we process credit cards, when people want to use a credit card to park in our parking system. 4G is anticipated to last for quite a long time, at least 10 years, but there is no forecasted end date currently for 4G technology. So this upgrade would last for an extended period of time, and not just the same situation we are now with the 4G technology. We looked at a number of vendors and systems as a way to do this. One of the things we looked at was our current vendor, we looked at another meter company, as well as Civic Smart, which is part of the Duncan parking system. We looked at not only price, but functionality of the meter systems to make a selection. One of the things that we also looked at was, would a kiosk system for parking lots be feasible? And we also looked at a managed system, something where the parking meter system is managed by someone, enforcement, and all of those things, and looked at that as also as an option. One of the reasons that we didn't select kiosks as a system solution was to look at how our parking lots are set up. If we were to try to go with a kiosk system, we would in fact have to do some modifications. We would presumably lose parking spaces. We're also worried about, it's kind of a similar situation that we have sometimes in the parking deck, where if we have one or two kiosks in a parking lot, and one of those machines goes down, there's a jam or something that occurs, we are now out of the parking business, you know, in that lot. Whereas with the single meter system, we have just that one spot that goes out, the remainder of the parking lot continues to function and collect revenue without any issue. One of the most frequent things that we have now, even with our meters with two meters on a post, we have a sign that points which meter that, or which spot is handled by that meter, is where people will pay in one meter and actually park in another spot. And we know that when they come in and explain, well, I got a parking ticket, I, you know, I paid to park, and we could look into the meter system and see that in fact they did pay, it's just that they kind of paid their friend's meter instead of the meter that they were at. That problem gets to be much bigger in a kiosk system, where you're dependent on remembering what number your car is parked at, go back to the machine, and things of that nature. So from a reliability, from a service point, from a situation of not having to expend extra money to engineer and re-table our parking lots, we decided to go with the single meter solution, which is what we have now. Then when we looked at the meters, we looked at cost and functionality as well to settle on the Duncan Civic Smart solution. That meter will fit in our current housing, it'll come with a new dome. One of the problems that we've had with our current system is the domes have all deteriorated to a point where they look pretty bad, and so this will freshen up our parking system from that perspective. It's also a scalable solution, so that as we go forward, we can add different bells and whistles, sensors, and things of that nature to improve the system, and we can do that in a smart way, because with the Civic Smart system, they've agreed to work with us to test any of these solutions prior to purchasing them or adding them to the system, and basically to prove their technology and their revenue-enhancing abilities, rather than just selling it to us today as an unknown commodity. We've checked their references and found them to be good. We also are positive, because this doesn't change anything with our Park Mobile system. So all of the use of that app through the person's smartphone continues to work in the same way. There's no changes in the meter numbers or the system. So if someone parked at a particular spot yesterday with Park Mobile, once the new meter comes in, they'd be able to do that same way without any change in functionality. One of the, we also looked at, this is a solution that we think is a long-term benefit. The technology is different than with our IPS system. We feel that the use of the rechargeable batteries, rather than depending on solar power, which is a problem particularly in our winter months, so maintenance and upkeep will be improved with the system. Based on our research, we feel very confident and positive in recommending the purchase of the Duncan Civic Smart meter system. The other issue that we looked at was the Lot 1. We looked at that from a perspective of, it has been free for quite some time. When it wasn't free, we had very, very little use. In fact, it would cost us $12,200 to put meters into the lot, so we're saving 40 meters, purchasing of 40 meters, when we know from our past experience that we would not be really receiving the equal benefit and revenue from that lot, because we would go back to the past system, where we didn't have much use in the lot and much revenue. We also, at the same time, coming to council, asking for an increase in the fee to $1.25. We felt this was another benefit to those by continuing to offer the same free parking in that lot, when we're enhancing the fee in other locations of the Duncan area. The also thing to remember is, is there's an upkeep on each meter, so there's connection charges, so we would save that ongoing cost in those 40 spots as well. I'm fully prepared to answer any questions that you may have about this part of it, and I believe we'll also talk more about the $1.25 increases about separately.
Mayor Pro Tem, Salvia.
Thank you. Chief, I just have a quick question. I'm sorry, I didn't get a chance to ask you earlier. So currently, our meters, the paint peels, they don't look very attractive. So are these gonna be painted, or is it some sort of anodized metal?
The, I can't answer that question, is what the top is, but we've been assured that it's not going to do the same thing, that the gray tops that we have now. So if we're starting from scratch, from the part that obviously looks the worst, is those gray tops, and we'll be getting new ones, and in talking to other cities that have the same meter, there have been no reports of any deterioration, such as we've had with the IPS here.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, Chief, just real quick also, what's the life expectancy on these new meters, did you say?
Between five to 10 years, if we're treating them right and keeping up on the maintenance, they can last up to 10 years. But they, generally speaking, five to 10 years is what's reported by the manufacturer.
Thank you. Like.
I was gonna say, council member Gould.
Thanks for that report, Chief. I was at the last meeting, and we've been following this a little bit, I looked up Civic Smart, and they're based in Wisconsin. I was surprised that there's not a meter company we could have used in the state. Is that the case?
Yeah, I'm not aware of any local meter company here, Chief.
Thank you.
Do you like a motion to approve the meters?
Yeah, so we can either, we can do, so there's three items. There's the $1.25 rate increase that takes in February, there's the parking meters, and there's the elevator lot to keep that. We can do those separately, or we can do them all together. Those were the recommendations of the Parking Advisory Committee.
For transparency, I'd like to see each one of the motions separate. One's a huge expense, the other ones are not. So I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of the Civic Smart meters at the recommendation of the police chief, to replace the outdated 2G parking meters.
Support.
Motion by council member Peterson, support by Mayor Pro Tem, Salvia. Discussion. Councilmember Albrecht.
Just anecdotal feedback, I'm very supportive of this, but the last, since the last meeting, I have had to come into town six times for different, not come into town, I like to come into town for six different events, and four of those times, I could not pay in the meters, because it wouldn't accept my card. I finally used your Park Mobile, doing it at night on a cold night. So I'm thinking that this replacement of these meters might make up that 10% short gap, where we're falling behind on revenue, because in a couple cases, I had to move my car a couple places until it took, you know, my credit card. Other times, I couldn't even read the, these were night events, so I couldn't even read the screen to see if it was taking my card. So I'm fully supportive of this, and I think with the new meters, we're gonna see a revenue bump that we really need for the parking fund.
I, we've all had those problems, I hope you're right. Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you.
One housekeeping item, though, Clerk may, should we put the price in that motion?
I believe your next item is the actual request to purchase the meters from the police chief.
I think that's what we just did.
That's what we just did.
Yeah, so just put the dollar amount in.
Yeah.
My understanding is that with this item, you're approving the concept to move forward
with that item, and then the next is the police chief's recommendation to go with a particular company, and the price would be in that one.
Okay, that's fine.
We'll do another one.
I'll make a motion to, for the second.
Motion by council member Peterson, support by council member Albrecht, to purchase the meters with, at the price of $275,887. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Okay, sir.
Make a motion to designate the elevator parking lot as a free parking lot for the police chief.
Support. Motion by council member Peterson, support by council member Sage. Discussion. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Very good.
I'd like discussion on the next one, since we left off with discussing this at the last meeting.
Right, so, Madam Clerk, was there a motion that we just tabled? So does that motion come back?
Yes, Your Honor, and that was.
Can you read the motion?[1689.23]
I can, from the minutes, I believe it was made by Councilmember Albrecht and supported by Councilmember Peterson. And if you'll give me just a minute.
No pressure, take your time.
Yeah, no pressure. To approve the Parking Advisory Committee's recommendation to increase the hourly parking rate from $1 per hour to $1.25 cents per hour effective February 1st, 2022.
Okay, so that's the motion on the floor.
That is correct.
Okay, discussion. Councilmember Albrecht.
Yeah, the minutes also said, Salvia expressed concern with the unknown maintenance costs that this increase may not cover. Harrison supported increases in small amounts. Sage asked if the maintenance costs identified were all, were all. Finance Director Moser answered, they are still looking at the costs, so that's why we tabled it for those discussion points. I just wanted to.
Right.
Thank you. Discussion. Councilmember Harrison.
Is Anthony on to, do we have an answer, I guess, of what the estimated?
Mr. City Manager, do you want to answer that question?
Sure, I can, and I believe Anthony is on.
Yes, yep.
All right, Anthony.
Oh, yes, yeah, I can take that one. So, the, at the last meeting, that was the explanation, we were discussing about the timing of that, on how we started the Pazer ratings, we've got that part complete, we're working with the engineers for a capital improvement plan. So, we had finished up the roads and the water and sewer, started, we did the facilities, and then we're rolling on with the parking lots. So, we're going to be sometime later, after the budget's adopted in May, around that timeframe, and Manager Wing can give a closer timeline because he's working with the engineers and DPW Director Ryan as well, on when we're going to have that completed. But that's going to be around the May-June timeframe, when we're going to be able to present the fully revolving plan. The numbers that are supported in the, with the recommendation now are supporting the original pro forma's plan, which we're now going to be going into the sixth year next year. So, the original pro forma had the $125,000 a year, and that's what we built in and continued using.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, question, during the discussions on the PAC committee, did they talk about actually eliminating that one hour free? Because this has been brought to my attention that we haven't really talked about that. We have that first hour that's free. Instead of increasing that, if we didn't charge that, we could actually probably make up the difference and have a surplus that would take care, not a surplus, but enough to maintain everything that we have, because we have quite a bit that is not, and this is coming from the residents, they'd rather do that than see an increase, you know? Because to them, it's not an increase, they see us being not really mindful of that free dollar we're giving away every day when we actually need the money for the structures to pay the bond debt.
Anthony, do you want to answer that? I mean, I think we.
Yeah, I can take that one. That was one of the options we had looked at, along with a lot of other options. And what it really boils down to is there's really only one option that will get us to where we need to be, save for Councilmember Albrecht's comments about the meters, you know, that 10% delta, right? Even if we did all these other triggers, get rid of the one hour, run down the Sundays, do that, we do all these other pieces, it still doesn't get us there without the increase to the hourly rate. That was the only one that would get us there. So, the recommendation and discussion on PAC is okay. Well, instead of having, and we can pull up the interactive model and display it, I know Marcy's got that set up, if we'd like to see all the different options that the PAC considered, I'm happy to run through those. But at the end of it, that was the only one that got us there. So, it was one change to something that's already used to being, you're already used to paying hourly, so it's just a change to the hourly. You know, we're all not used to paying on Sunday, we're all not used to paying on holidays. So, that was one of those kind of things that were considered and bounced back and forth, but at the end of it, that's the only one that gets us there.
Yeah, so we looked at all those, Councilor Sagey, we looked at all those, and a lot of them, there really was not much to be gained by a lot of those different ones. And so, this was really the view of, this was the only one that was going to do it at all. So, that's where the decision was.
Okay. And I'm just, you brought it up because the public has asked, and, you know, more thinking about all the passes that we do provide, that people pay for, that would probably make up for that in there, because most of the, I'm in the parking structure every day, so I know how many cars are in there. So, we're not always full, but I know that a lot of those are people who have parking passes.
Councilmember Harrison.
Thank you. I could see that free hour disappearing to cover the maintenance costs potentially, once we know and have a number for that. So, I think we still have, it's nice to still have options to pull from if we do decide to move forward with this dollar, or this 25 cent increase.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. So, moving to $1.25 generates $225,000 a year into the parking fund. Going to just 30 minutes free creates $50,000. I do not support eliminating the hour free. That's a very important flexibility option that people need to be able to zip in and zip out. That's, to me, that's a distinction of our parking system that brings value to everyone who comes to Rochester. The increase, the permit cost was studied, and again, that doesn't create large changes in the budget. You know, the buck and a quarter, kind of coincidentally, I read an interesting article today that the Dollar Store is going to a buck and a quarter. And so, I kind of thought, oh, gosh, this must be the inflationary thing to do, that, you know, parking goes to a buck and a quarter. I mean, I don't like the idea of raising the rates, but I do think to cover the cost of the meters, to cover the, you know, we have increased labor costs built into this budget. You know, this system is managed by employees, so there are inflationary costs in this dollar and a quarter. I think we need more usage, I think we're going to get more enforcement and collection on the tickets that are issued with the new meters. I am unhappy that we don't have all of the maintenance costs in, but I think at this point in time, we have to move to a buck and a quarter. And then we're just going to have to revisit parking in Lew in December, and we're going to need to review the maintenance. I don't like incrementaling this, but at this point in time, I would make a motion to increase parking rates to a dollar and a quarter, effective February 9th, 2022.
I think the motion's already on the table.
Oh, okay. So, I don't have to do that.
Right. Was that the right date?
No, it's the first.
Yes, Your Honor, it was. You said February 1st?
No.
No, the night.
The motion I made was the first.
Right, we go back to my.
Right.
Okay.
So.
Further discussion, Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, thank you. So, I guess, well, I was, I was bringing forth what the public has talked about regarding that hour free, not myself. But when you have, when you have most of the parking structure during the day that is being utilized by those who work there with a parking pass, we still are not collecting money for, during that time, because that's even at a discounted rate. So, I would like that to be part of the discussion then in the future as well, too, because that's not really, in their eight hours a day, you're not paying $8 to be there per day, okay? And $10 is the max for all day. So, I think that we need to really look at how this is working. I'm not in favor of increasing a quarter. I don't care how much money it's bringing in right now, it's only if those, only if the meters are fully utilized, because right now, you're not going to always get that. So, and we don't know what's coming ahead, so I don't want to be stuck having to raise it again in the near future, which would be next year, right after this one. So, I just think there's still more discussion that needs to be had before we really make a decision on the dollar amount. And when we don't know really, and the maintenance piece, we haven't known the maintenance since we've actually had these going and we had to start a maintenance, so I think we need to be mindful moving forward.
Councilmember Albrecht.
I'm not in favor of pushing this down the road. When I looked at the PAC that was presented at the last meeting, the PAC Committee had, or Parking Authority Committee, had put together five or six other communities, Birmingham, Royal Oak, Ferndale, the ones that come to mind, and at a dollar and a quarter, we were still well below what other communities were charging. City Manager Wing at the last meeting said it would take some time to get all the maintenance costs, and he said he would not have it for this meeting. So, I stand by the motion and the February 1st date. I remember at the last meeting, I think Councilmember Harrison wanted to delay the date, I think, a few months.
I did, to make it quarterly.
Actually, Councilmember Peterson, yes.
To do it quarterly.
Delay it. I think, I stick to my motion of February 1st, it gets us past the holiday season. It's probably a slow time of the year anyway, and again, nobody wants to increase rates, but I think this is a very nominal increase, and as Mayor Protem Salvia said, it's going to generate, not this year, because we're prorated, it's not going to generate the $225,000, but annually it will. So, I don't know if I have to reintroduce my motion, or it's on the table.
Correct.
Further discussion? Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, so that would be based on 90% occupancy, 90% use all the time, then? It's the only way you're going to get your $2.25, that's what this is based off of with the 10% loss, correct? I'm just, I'm just wanting.
It's 10% from the original pre-COVID numbers.
Correct.
Right. Right. And those really haven't changed much.
So, maybe as a point of clarification on that, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, it's not 90% utilization, it's that the revenue projection is at 90% of pre-COVID. Correct. It's not 90% of utilization within the system.
We've never used it 100%.
Correct.
Right, so we are still not trying to plan to get this fully funded, then, on its own.
No, this is exactly what this is for, it is to be fully self-sufficient.
Right.
And that's what this increase would do.
Yeah, I think the interactive model we were looking at had the different levers that took us above the break-even point, based on the maintenance costs that we were aware of at the last meeting, not knowing if those are going to go higher. But those were the levers, again, that Marcy and Anthony took us through, that showed that this would make us solvent, even at the 90% utilization.
And other cities are trying to fix their roads and do all kinds of stuff with their parking system, we are just trying to make our parking system, at least right now, self-sufficient. Mayor Protem Salvia.
Since I have the pro forma here, and so just speaking to the deficit, if we did not do the rate change and purchase the meters, it would be a deficit of 248 in the 2022 budget year, 2023, it's 161,000, and 135,000 in 2023, 2024. So, it is a deficit forecast if we don't make the rate change.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you, and we will, the Parking Committee is going to meet again, and we will have a report on the parking in Lew, a, hopefully a recommendation to the council to consider.
Mayor, I have a question. So, in the future, though, can we try to find a way, since we are increasing the rates and that, to not take from the DDA to cover costs then in the future? Because I don't think that's fair either. We took almost a million dollars last year to cover this bond debt.
I think most of that was COVID-related, from my recollection.
Well, will they be reimbursed for that?
It's up to the council, I would say. It's up to this council, not the DDA. Anything further?
Nope.
Okay. Next is consideration of support of professional engineering services for the Paint Creek Trail Bridge, 31.7 replacement, I think that's the bridge by Dinosaur Hill.
Dinosaur Hill, correct.
Councilmember Sage.
Yes, so at the last trailway meeting, this was discussed, and it was something I had mentioned in miscellaneous a couple of meetings ago as well, that we had some grant opportunities, this being one of them. So, the first part of any bridge replacement, of which we have 12 bridges on the trail, and we've only replaced one, so the other ones, we are at one of the priority bridges for replacement. But that process starts with getting the engineering, the design engineering study done. So, we just happened upon a grant opportunity that we've also talked to the community foundation, and they are in full support of us putting in the grant. They're not saying they're going to give it to us, but they do support what we want to use the funding for. And I think the city manager has been working with our, with AEW, and we have an estimate that I think would come in at that grant level. So, we wouldn't even need to conditionally approve any additional dollars from council. So, it makes sense.
Mayor, I'm happy to. And then. Mr. City Manager. Thank you. We also have Aseel, our engineer, on Zoom, and I believe Melissa, the trail manager, is also here as well. What Councilmember Sage just noted, we did include in your packet a proposal from AEW to provide the engineering services in the total amount of 80, or sorry, $48,700, which is under the $50,000, which is the top of the grant amount. So, with that being under the 50, depending on if the grant is awarded for the full 50, this would actually not require the city to contribute anything. Of course, if the grant comes in only at 40,000, then it would be the, you know, the difference between the 48,700. And so, it'd be the $8,700, depending on, but I believe Melissa will tell you that she's going to go after the full 50. And, you know, I believe with the AEW recommendation for their professional services, Aseel might, or Melissa might want to comment.
Melissa, would you like to comment? Are you there? Not sure I see her there.
I don't think so.
She may have had to drop off.
She is, she is on, yeah. No, I'm here, sorry, technical difficulties. Yes, I agree with everything that City Manager Wing and Councilmember Sage said. We do plan to go for the full $50,000 from the Community Foundation of Southeast Michigan for this grant. I've talked to their program officer, and they seem very interested in the project. And as Councilmember Sage said, this is a high priority for the Trailways Commission, as the bridge has some structural issues, as well as there's frequent unnatural log jams occurring at that bridge, that's a concern with the DNR and how that's affecting the stream, and I've spoken to them about them, and they've agreed to write a letter of support for this project as well. So, it's a priority for the commission to get this done.
Very good. Further comments from the council? So, what do we?
Yep, so tonight, council's consideration is really just support of, so it would be conditional approval of the, any outstanding balance, if there happens to be any, on the professional engineering services. My understanding is the Paint Creek Trailway will apply for the grant, we will then find out, and then come back to council if there is. I'm sure Councilmember Sage would come back also and say, hey, we were awarded for this dollar amount, and if there is none, that's great, we'll just apply the grant, and they would move forward at that point.
Okay, so we need a motion to that effect?
For conditional support and approval of going after the grant up to the 50,000.
Councilmember Harrison.
I'll make the motion to approve council's consideration, in the hopes there will be support to conditionally approve the remaining outstanding balance owed on the professional engineering services.
Support. Support by Councilmember Gould. Further discussion? Councilmember Peterson.
So, okay, but we don't know what that might, the delta might be there yet, so, until we get, find out if we even get approved.
Yeah, they have not applied for the grant. I believe, actually, the reason why it's on this agenda is, I believe, the grant deadline is December 10th.
Correct.
And then they would go through their process, so it probably won't be to the spring that we would find out, or the Trailway Commission would find out if the full amount would be authorized.
That's correct. April of next year would be the award, and then its timing would begin May 1st.
Very good.
Then how long will it take to go in?
So, wouldn't be any, we're not looking to replace the bridge, so this grant.
I mean, to fix it.
Yeah, this grant would be good for, from May 1st of 2022 to April 30th of 2023, which would give AEW that amount of time to actually complete the engineering study.
Oh, just the study?
Correct. Yeah, we're not approving anything except the study tonight.
Right.
Okay.
It's also like putting plans together for replacing the bridge, like you'll have an engineering plan complete and done.
Right.
Which then would be able to answer Ann's question. How long would it take for the bridge to?
Right.
Right.
So, it's going to be 50,000 just to get plans done for this here?
Correct.
48.7 is the.
Well, it's 50, yeah.
Like surveying, geotechnical investigation, hydraulic analysis for the drain, coming up with the size of the bridge, type of the bridge, like basically what it takes to replace it, as a design.
Thank you, Aseel. Councilmember Albrecht, and then.
The question of Councilmember Sage, I understand this is just for the engineering part of it.
Right.
And we're still a year away from even when, whatever, whether we have to replace the whole bridge, parts of it. Has there been, and maybe Melissa Ford, what is an average cost of replacing bridges in the past on the Paint Creek Trail? Because that's going to come before us at some point in time. This is like a road.
Right.
This is like a road. We have the engineering, which, you know, Aseel always does for us, and then we come back with, now we got to dig up the road, we got to put in the water, we got to put in the cables. What's a bridge going to cost us if?
So, Melissa, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think the last one we did, I think the last one we did, or the only one we've done, is 700,000.
Oh, you're correct. It was 670,000 to do the actual construction for the bridge, and then we had an additional 70,000 for the construction engineering on top of that.
And it was shut, had shut the trail down all summer?
Correct, we did.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. So I support this because it gets us in a position to get further grant money for two reasons. Number one, we're using grant money, as well as we're getting ourselves into a position to get grant money. I mean, if we don't have the study done, you can't get the grant. So there's going to be a lot of grant money out there with the federal government, with other agencies, so we are going to be in a position to get some of those dollars in Rochester. So I support this.
Very good. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you, and thank you, councilmember Sage, for bringing this forward, and Melissa as well. And you, Aseel, too. All right, next, for new business referral miscellaneous, do we have any further public comments? Brian, anybody?
I'm not seeing any, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have a receipt of the check register and the city manager update. Mr. City Manager.
Yep, thank you. The two check registers in your packet are for November 11th and the 18th. As for my miscellaneous items, the city has partnered up with the Red Cross for a blood drive, so that will be coming up in early February. We'll have other details as we get closer to that. The other thing I want to note is, working with our new Public Works Director, Patrick, we have decided to extend the leaf pickup period, so that will be going until early December. That's mainly due to the lateness of the leaves dropping, so as you still see, some leaves still clinging to trees. We typically finish up around Thanksgiving, but we're going to be extending into early December, and we'll continue to post on the city's website the location of the pickup, the crews. That's all I have.
Very good. Councilmember Albrecht?
Do we have a date? I know GFL is extended through the week of December 18th for bagged pickup. Do we know how long the truck will be?
Most likely to the 9th of December, which is the Friday, so about two weeks of an extension.
Thank you.
Very good. Madam Clerk?
I have two items, and both of them are for the newly elected. Before you, at your place, I gave you your certificates from the county. Attached to them, paperclipped, is a letter from the county and a campaign finance form. So those are usually time-sensitive, so I would encourage all of you to read through those and finish up what you need to do with the county on that. And I need to collect your oaths of office, so I'll come grab those before you all leave.
Thank you, and I think it's December 3rd is when you have to file your second report, so don't forget, because they will find you.
Well, it, Your Honor, further, it could impact your ability to run for office going forward. So you file your, we just watched that with Tanya.
Correct.
They, yeah, so that is something new with new laws, so pay attention.
Very good. Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Banda, are you up there? Anything tonight?
I am, sir. I'm all set, thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Sage?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Councilmember Harrison?
The Festival of Trees happened Friday evening. It was a great fundraiser. The Rochester Area Youth Assistance League participated this year. We purchased a tree to be auctioned off. It was a beautiful four-foot Nutcracker themed, and it did sell, so we're excited for that, and we were happy to be a part of it. It was a beautiful event.
Very good.
Yes, Mr. Ford.
Festival of Trees was awesome. Last night was really good with the big bright light show, a lot of people, a lot of fun, so hopefully we'll have a wonderful holiday.
Thank you. Councilmember Gould?
Thank you very much for having me here. I'm really happy to be a part of this. I've been looking forward to this for a while. Excited to work with y'all.
Great, congratulations as well. Councilmember Albrecht?
Really, a question for city manager Wing. Will you be providing some guidance on how we're going to stage the parade for Rochester Council? I know I've reached out to Maggie, and I know you sent something out this week, so I just want to make sure. That'll be, I didn't say it in any of the reports, but I want to make sure we know, are we, the last time we were here, the mayor and his wife were in a car. We're behind walking. Are we walking? When you get, the forms we got from Maggie were a little confusing, so.
So we're going to, the council people are going to meet at the New Hamlet Pub at 12, and the mayor and the city council, or it's going to be like last year, where you're going to have a car, except for it's bring your own car this year, because the dealerships don't have any cars.
They have no cars.
So you have to bring your own car, and they will put something on the car, and you have to have your own driver.
We will have one car, not seven cars.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, we'll have two. We'll have one for me and then one for the city council. So somebody of the city council has to volunteer to bring their car and then have a driver for the car if you want to walk. So that's the, that's the plan.
Interesting.
Yeah, BYOC. Bring your own car.
I can offer my car. It's pretty and red.
Yeah.
It's pretty.
Yeah, and I encourage council people, if they can, to definitely walk in the parade, because I think it's a good, you know, good way to, for us to show that we're out there and our council is out there viable, and of course, it's our city.
That was it.
Talked a lot.
Yeah. Mayor Protem Salvia?
Yeah, thank you. I'd just like to wish everyone Happy Thanksgiving. You know, in Rochester, we're already celebrating Christmas, which is awesome, but Happy Thanksgiving, and I know the big bright light show is on, and I know a lot of residents were asking, when are we going to shut the streets so we can just stand out in the street and take pictures? So caroling in the city comes December 12th, so that's another upcoming event that everyone loves, so mark your calendars. Thank you.
Very good. I just also like to say, I thought Lanyup went very well last night. It was, everybody was happy to be out and about. I saw a lot of council people out there. Again, thank you to the police and fire. I thought they did an excellent job keeping order, and even though everybody was orderly and thinking about all the dangerous stuff in the world, I thought they did a good job of thinking about it and keeping us all safe. Another thing here is Rochester Adams High School is playing in the state finals, so good luck to Rochester Adams. They are playing at Ford Field at 12 o'clock on Saturday.
Go Highlanders.
Of course, go Highlanders, but of course, it's going to be difficult for some of us to watch that game, because I've heard there's another big college football game this Saturday at noon, so.
Mayor, I guess, can we just announce regarding the Grand Marshall Gala as well, which is on December 2nd, 2021? From 6 to 9?
Yeah, and that's at Great Oaks Country Club.
Correct.
And then, before we go into closed session, I know we have a new councilperson, and so a lot of the boards and commissions are changing and things, so I kind of want to just real quickly go there, because a lot of the boards and commissions' meetings are moved up because of holidays and stuff. So just so real quickly go through this. The Budget Committee is, I think stays the same, Mayor Protem Salvia, councilmember Albrecht, councilmember Harrison. Facilities is councilmember Peterson, councilmember Mayor Protem Salvia, Salvia, and councilperson Gould. Infrastructure is the same, council, Mayor Protem Salvia, councilmember Albrecht. Grant Committee, councilmember Peterson, and we're going to add, because this is going to be such a big committee, we're going to add Mayor Protem Salvia. And then Sister City Committee is going to be councilmember Albrecht, councilmember Harrison, and councilmember Gould. Then we have the Cemetery Committee, councilmember Gould, City Beautiful, excuse me, City Beautiful's councilmember Harrison. Community House, excuse me, I'll take a little water. Community House is councilmember Mayor Protem Salvia. The DDA Liaison is going to be councilmember Harrison. Historicals can be councilmember Sage. OPEB is going to be, councilmember Gould is going to now be the city council representative. Parking is going to be councilmember Sage. Planning, councilmember Sage. PSD is going to be councilmember Gould. Tree Committee is going to stay the same, councilmember Sage, Mayor Protem Salvia, and councilmember Albrecht. OPC is going to be Mayor Protem Salvia. Trailway is going to be councilmember Sage. Rara is going to be councilmember Albrecht, and Raya is going to be councilmember Harrison. And I will send out these two, and then we're going to have a couple openings. That councilmember Gould is coming off the OPC Board and the OPEB Board, so we're going to have citizen openings for that. I think, Madam Clerk, I think we've had an application for the DDA, not the DDA Board, but the OPC Board.
Correct.
Right.
Mr. Fisk.
Mr. Fisk. So next week will be.
Next meeting.
Next meeting, thank you. We'll be announcing a person that, and we're looking for applications for that. Councilmember Harrison?
May I just mention, too, that we have openings on the PSD Board as well, so if we could do another push for that, or make people aware that there are openings on the PSD?
Okay.
Your Honor, usually, especially with the PSD, because you have to be a member in the PSD, those are usually handled by Christie, because she is, works with the businesses, she's familiar with them, so she's aware that there's an opening, and we just wait for her to notify us that she has applicants.
Okay.
But we can still look, we can still look for applicants ourselves, though, as well. Okay, and then we are, need a motion to go into closed session for a legal opinion, and do we, Mr. City Manager, are we going to potentially come out of the meeting?
No, there's no intent to come out.
So I had a question then on the agenda. Are we doing the reports from the boards and commissions?
Yep, so that was actually after, or you could, Mayor, if you'd like to, you could actually go through those now.
Okay, I'm sorry, I thought it said these were from the next meeting.
There's the next meeting, and then after that, on the 4th.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, sorry.
Okay, so first we have, thank you, councilmember Sage. First, we'll see a report from the OPC?
Certainly, we had.
Oh, excuse me one moment.
I'm sorry.
I'd like to go back. I had my hand up. We have 14 committees, and I was just placed on the grant and taken off a couple others that I was on, so I'm going to decline your request for me to sit on the grant committee. Okay, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Mayor Protem Salvia on the OPC.
Yeah, so reporting out the OPC Board Met on November 18th, kind of highlights from the agenda, the audit is nearing completion. They have implemented the same software, financial software that the city uses, BSNA, and are really happy with that. We did a facilities tour and took a look at some of the improvements and some things that have been redone, and lots happening at the OPC.
Very good, thank you. Next is from the Trailway Commission, councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Obviously, the big update, what we just spoke about, but we did come back out with our meeting schedule for 2022, and as in the past, the April through September meetings will be held here in council chambers for the trailway.
Very good, thank you. Next, receive a report from the City Beautiful Committee, councilmember Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor. We decided not to meet in December, so we're taking a break as things slowed down with the winter weather upon us. I'd like to congratulate Annette for receiving the Good Neighbor Award, and just to remind everyone that nominations are always open, and we're always looking for ways to recognize our good neighbors. The pollinator, the Rochester Pollinators have been staying very busy. We had the gardens, native plant gardens planted underneath the bridge near the Atala Heart Center, and those aren't looking great now, but that's because it's winter time, and come spring, they're going to be in full bloom, and we'll plant seeds to help fill out the area as well. So it's, if you think it looks a little bit sparse, we do have intentions of adding more to that. And do you want me to just jump into PSD?
Go ahead.
So most of the PSD I already covered as well. I wasn't sure if we were going to do this or not. So the main priority right now for PSD is finding, we have some openings, and we are looking for people to help fill those, so it is very specific, the rules around that, as Leanne mentioned, but we're actively recruiting. So if anyone knows a business of a business in downtown, we need some more people to serve on that board. And that was, and then I already talked about Festival of Trees as well. It was a great success.
Very good, thank you.
I see wheels turning already. That's perfect.
Next is a report from the Downtown Development Authority. We, first, we had the visioning session presentation that the council had and the planning commission had, and talked about things downtown, and that's going to be pushed forward to the goals and objectives of the DDA. We had, we talked about the parking issues that we've just talked about here. Christie and crew presented the Christmas schedule, which started out with the Tree Festival and Lanyup to arousing success. It looks like we are, the county is not going to be supporting us for Fire and Ice, but we are still going to have, try to have the ice sculptures, and we're working on trying to have some kind of fireworks. Councilmember Albrecht?
On the agenda, the November 10th agenda, it also had light pole replacement program update. Could we just, could Tonya Lapuma, who's the Assistant Board Chair, send us a report? Back when I was on the committee, there was a plan in action to replace certain amount of light poles each year. We'd set aside about 150,000 each year, which would cover X number of poles. I'd just like to see how that's progressed in the.
Yeah, and Nick, can you answer that? Because I want to say it's almost completed.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we completed, yes, thank you, Mayor. And the councilmember Albrecht, we completed all the hook and bells, and now we're to the acorn, I'm sorry, all the, yeah, all the hook and bells, now we're to the acorns. There's, we're doing, we're like $250,000 a year. So we, I think we have three more years to go to get about 40 a year, so we're going to finish, university's finished, now we're working the side streets from Main Street to pine, and then we're going to finish. We can get you that report. We've kept a map that's got a drawing that'll show all the phases we've done and what we have left to do. It's a great project, probably three more a year.
That's great to hear. Just maybe it goes to the objectives, if we could see the map, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Appreciate it, thank you, Nick.
I'll get that from Christie.
And then, and then the last thing was Roger Knapp attended his first meeting, so he was officially on board, and we're looking forward to having him on the DDA Board. That's all from the DDA. On to report from the Tree Committee, councilmember Albrecht.
We had probably one of our more robust and interactive tree committees, and some great reports. If you remember earlier in the year, we had set a goal of 50 trees planted by the city and 50 trees planted through residents using the Tree Bait Program. We will have achieved the 50 goals, 50 trees planted by the city. However, 22 city street trees have already been planted, 14 were planted just this fall, and the remaining 14 city street trees will be planted in the spring, again, when the planting season is, so we will literally hit our goal of 50 trees planted. Going to the Tree Bait Program, which we introduced earlier in the summers and a couple issues of our newsletter, started off slow, but we were able to plant 10 trees, nine trees received up to the $250 rebate, so we're hoping that more residents, when they hear this, and I'm going to also campaign to have it in the newsletter in the spring, not the winter one, because not a lot of planning being done. But so, of the 100 trees, we had gold, we planted 59, well, really 60 trees, so again, we will continue to market the Tree Bait Program. When you look at the tree fund, those 14 trees that were planted, we haven't gotten the bill from that, but our tree fund is roughly around $40,000. And then we are also, it was presented, a few meetings ago, we were talking about the community garden and the need, the opportunity to plant 25 to 30 sugar maples around that. Nick had worked with the DPW to do a soil test there, and Nick, jump in if I said something out of place, but they came to the conclusion that we could plant trees in that area. We're looking at two to three rows of sugar maples. Nick Ever, the entrepreneur, is also looking to make it a sort of a mini park where we can put some benches in there and raise some funds by selling of benches, since it'll be a beautiful area, especially with the new community garden. And then we, we will apply for our Tree City USA application, which would make us the eighth or ninth year in a row, the deadline. The deadline is by the end of the year, December 31st, we anticipate it'll happen. Arbor Day next year will be celebrated on April 29th. We will, again, do what we did, we're gonna recommend to city council, that we, uh, have a resolution on Arbor Day, and we still wanna continue to ramp up the planting of trees in the Mount Avon Cemetery, specifically along that, uh, the, the, the street there. So the trees planted last year had a tough go, uh, but thanks to some green thumbs and some additional fertilizer, they both survived, so we're gonna continue to work that, uh, that area along the fence line. That was it.
Very good, thank you. And also, Councilmember Albrecht, a report on Rara?
Yeah, um, the, the last time I, we had a Rara meeting, Councilmember Peterson had asked, uh, if I could share the report, so I, um, PDF'd those to City Manager Wing, those were in your packets. And, um, the news on, on really, people are coming back and, and using the facilities. The supervisors there are working very, very hard, uh, especially our new dance supervisor. You know, the dance area's gotten very competitive, uh, but, um, all, all figures are really pointing up with, with, uh, with the different areas that they, they all represent, so the numbers are in your packets, and if people like that transparency, I'll include those going forward, or maybe every quarter or something, uh, as you, as you, as you like. We then talked about, um, uh, the HVAC system, uh, in the main building, and we also talked about a potential, uh, putting the 480 building up, up to market to, to sell. So that was talked about. We, uh, are updating some HR policies that were in need of, 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 of being done, and reviewing our policy and procedure manual, so it was a, a pretty long meeting, but got a lot of things done. And again, if you haven't gone to some of the Rara, I went to the, um, uh, craft fair a couple weekends ago, which was, uh, the same weekend as the OPC one, which I went to that one also. So, uh, um, you know, Rara's doing a lot of things, uh, to, to get people involved, and if you haven't, aren't following them on Facebook, uh, please do so, because they have, you know, CPR for babysitters, they have a lot of craft things. We're doing, um, um, we had our first adaptive, uh, uh, dance, uh, again, so a lot of the things we've, we've done in the past are coming back, and we will have a fundraiser at, uh, North Lane's Bowling in February that I'll talk about when we get there, so. It's all looking good, thank you.
Very good. Any further comments, questions? All right, so now we need a motion to go into closed session without any anticipation of coming out. One, one more thing?
The Historic Commission, Historical Commission?
I'm really missing tonight. See, you put it underneath the thing, Blaine, I completely missed, you know, Councilmember Sage, Historical.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So a quick update on the Historical Home Plaque Program. Throughout its inception, throughout the, the life of the program, we've, we've sold 135 plaques. We've, uh, actually sold five this year, and they, they're very appreciative for all the additional communication that the city's helping maintain awareness for this program, so we do appreciate that. There was some lengthy discussion regarding the mural at, uh, at the community, Rochester Community Schools Building, and, uh, with an understanding that they want some clarity on where it's gonna go, um, once RCS vacates that building. I know they have, probably have intention to bring it with them to the new building, but I don't, I don't know how they're gonna do that, since it's, um, it's owned by the federal government, so I'm not sure they have claim to it, but that'll just be a discussion as we go down that path. So make note of that, please, uh, Blaine, uh, I know, cause you're on that committee, the Legacy Committee. And then the, the one other question they asked was about the Soapbox Derby Car. Where do we currently, we, we got, uh, a car donated to us, uh, to the city, uh, where is that?
It's currently in our storage.
Okay.
Yep.
It was here for a while, no?
Yeah, yeah. We, we had it for over a year over at the museum, however, uh, they no longer had, uh, uh, capacity there in a climate-controlled area.
Okay.
And so, um, we took it back.
Is there any ideas where we could?
We were hoping the Historical Commission might, uh, potentially have some ideas, but right now, we, we are storing it here in a temperature-controlled environment.
Okay, we'll give that some thought, and we'll get back to you.
You, uh, Councilmember Harrison?
I have two questions, um, my first is, will you remind me and, and the public, what year does your home have to be, um, to qualify for the plaque program?
So it's a rolling scale, um, I think now it has to be-
1955, I think.
55 now?
Thank you. And my, my second question is, is it possible to get updates, kind of like how we do this with the agenda for the Legacy Committee as well, City Manager Wing?
Sure, I'd be happy, uh, they currently don't have their next meeting scheduled yet, but I'm happy to provide an update.
Thank you, I just wanna stay, I think, as we all do, in the loop on that.
Very good.
Oh, and I'm just, um, Mayor, if I can, um, I would like City Manager to make sure that I receive all, um, all packets of information for all committees, thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Now are we ready for a motion to-
Make a motion to go into closed session with no intent to return.
Support.
Motion by Mayor Protem Salvia, support by Councilmember Peterson. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson.
Yes.
Salvia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Harrison.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Thank you, and we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll be ready to roll.